Silence, um. Two longtime employees of the Monticello Central School District passed away recently. Uh, Mr. Dennis D. Pasquale. Um, was with the district for uh twenty plus years in our I T department. And Mrs. Joan Skalsky, retired high school English teacher, um. Who is with the district for, I can only imagine probably over thirty years because I remember her. Um, from back in my days when I was going to school here. So, um. Our condolences go out to their friends and family, and if everyone could please have a quick moment of silence in their memory. Thank you so much. Everyone, please silence electronic devices as needed. Um, if you have a printed agenda from when you walked in, we did amend the agenda earlier this evening, um. We'd like to welcome aboard Mrs. Melinda Kwestowski, our newest board member. We were slightly out of order though to include her in our executive session, so we did amend the agenda earlier. Um, to get her sworn in so she could join us in executive session, so. Um, that is a little out of order, we apologize, but we wanted to get one's feet wet first night. Uh, motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, is there any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Dr. Evans, motion to adopt the agenda as is, motion by Ms. Greco, seconded by Ms. Kwestowski. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We're doing her? Yeah. Um, so we do have a code of conduct public hearing this evening. Um, during the public hearing, we do recess the meeting for that public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to recess for the code of conduct public hearing. Motion by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Greco, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, so we are officially in recess, um, we do have a code of conduct public hearing scheduled for this evening, and I will pass it over to Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, so good evening, everyone, uh, this is the public hearing regarding uh some very minor revisions. To the code of conduct, most of those revisions are a result of the new uh cellphone ban that was enacted into policy by the board at the last meeting. Um, and there's some other uh housekeeping items as well as some revisions around uh. Expectations of students attending uh classes in the high school. So are there any questions from the board or the public regarding these changes to the code of?
Dealer. Alright, if there's no questions at this time, um. Motion to adjourn the code of conduct public hearing. Made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Grodin, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And a motion to reconvene the meeting by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Grodin, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Approval draft minutes, July second. Two thousand twenty-five reorganizational meeting made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by. Ms. Greco, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Um, Melinda, you'll find in that meeting a breakout of all the committees that we signed you up for.
I've already seen it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did get you on a budget and audit, it was a little tough, but we shoehorned you in.
I saw there's a lot of seats there.
Um, approval draft minutes, July second, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting, motion by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Ms. Greco, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So we do have a presentation this evening, our um. Superintendent, Dr. Matthew Evans, um, is presenting his superintendent goals for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand six. Uh, school year, so I'll pass this off to Travis.
Thank you, President Crumley, and good evening, Board of Education members, good evening, uh, members of the community. Uh, so every year at this time, uh, I present the board uh with my proposed goals for the upcoming year. Uh, tonight, I intend to do so again, as well as the rationale behind it, some of the data that we looked at. With the intention of having the goals uh ready for the board's uh consideration at the August seventh meeting. So things that I took into account in developing these goals were first and foremost feedback that I had received from the Board of Education. Through my evaluation process. Uh, and uh what was relayed back to me were uh areas that the board wanted. A greater focus for the upcoming year, obviously, and I think we can all agree, improving student achievement. Regardless of whatever levels we are currently at, there are always any school district, but. Uh, we as well are always striving to improve student achievement. Improving processes on staff recruitment, retention and morale. Improving the quality of food services and expanding graduation pathway opportunities for our high school students. So uh, one of the challenges uh that I have as superintendent with relative to my evaluation is I'm required to submit a self-evaluation in mid-May. To the Board of Education, at which time uh very little is known relative to. We'll say standardized test results, whether those be three through eight data or N W A data or graduation rates or regents data at that time. So uh, that in addition to uh really, I'm trying to keep fear of pinpointing one student achievement measure in my goal. Uh, my goals, because we really need to be looking at all of student achievements. Whether those be three to eight tests or N W A or regents or graduation rates, and I'll reference a couple of them in here. So that along with, you recall from the last meeting, we did see a one percent dip in student uh average daily attendance over the last year. So that I may include, I'm incorporating in as a goal this year. So my theory of action really is if improvements are made in student attendance, staff recruitment and retention. Alternative pathways toward graduation and food service quality. Then student achievement should improve. Now, obviously, there are a whole host of other things that will drive student achievement. Uh, instructional practices, curriculum development, instructional leadership and so on. Uh, however, as it relates to my goals and what we can actually measure in early May of twenty-six. Uh, these are the ones that I'm focusing on. So we start off with enrollment trends, uh, and again, this isn't, I don't think this is new to the Board of Education. Um, but looking at the last five years, we have seen a decline in student enrollment by almost eight percent. Uh, this is consistent with most other districts in Sullivan County, with most other districts in the state of New York. Uh, some of that decline uh is a result of increasing numbers in. Uh, homeschooling, however, it doesn't explain the majority of the decline, so I think we've gone from maybe like. Forty students in twenty twenty-one to about a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty. This past year, but you see that the decline is much more than that, so uh that's a piece of it, but it doesn't explain. Uh, most of the decline, and I would say our. Numbers of students who are homeschooled is less than the pers- the national percentage, which is around, I think, six and a half percent. So we're actually below that national number, Helen?
Are special education out of district placements in this number?
No, this is only who attend our uh K twelve schools. So this does not include out of district placements.
So has that gone up since twenty twenty-one?
We did not look at that in this data, but I. I know it slightly, but most of that is going from like, no longer going to Sullivan Voces or Orange Ulster Voces. But going to another placement, so we could look at that, but I don't think that's explaining it either. Okay, uh, we also looked at four-year graduation rates. And as we stand right now, I can't give you an exact June twenty twenty-five number yet with any certainty. Uh, but we do think it's going to be, the August twenty twenty-five number. Is probably going to be above the seventy-eight percent rate of what it was last year. So what you see on this graph, the red line is the state average, the blue line is. The Monticello Central School District, which does include out of district placements, so it's not just high school. Um, some of these numbers, I would say, are a bit of an anomaly. Um, I think, you know, a couple of those years, it seems to be really high. Um, some of those years are explained by some of the safety nets that uh were put into place as a result of COVID. And you do see a slight rebound up from August twenty-three, we think it's going to be higher than uh seventy-eight percent. By August twenty-five, perhaps around eighty percent, but we don't know yet. So. Uh, one of the things that we began looking at this past year at the uh encouragement and direction of the board. Uh, is to look at the different endorsements, pathways and seals. That our high school class, uh, our seniors are graduating with, so what you see on this page. Uh, is the most recent Monticello High School class of twenty twenty-five. And the different endorsements, pathways or seals that they left us with. Um, I don't know how these numbers compare before this past year, because this is something that we collect locally. So when you go to the State Edge website, data dot nice dot gov. If a student graduated with the humanities pathway, which is think the traditional regents route, five regents and uh the twenty-two credits. They would go there, whether or not they got a seal of civic readiness. Or they, they got a seal of by literacy, or they got the uh individual arts assessment pathway, so they all go there and it looks like those are the only graduates that we have. We know that it's more nuanced than that, we know that we have a, a, a pretty rich uh offerings at our high school. So there were no students who graduated with the arts. Pathway, but we did this year for the first time have two graduates. Who uh won the, or achieved the individual arts assessment pathway. So technically, they should be in that arts pathway, but they actually kind of went above that with the I A A P. Uh, we had six graduates receive the seal of by literacy, thirty. Graduated from career and technical education with the program endorsement. So that means they actually uh got the national endorsement to become an electrician or a plumber or an auto tech or whatever the case may be. So we do have more students attending there, but thirty of our graduates actually received that. Sixty-eight of our graduates graduated with a career development plan or a C D O S, as it's sometimes known. A hundred twenty-four of our graduates had the seal of civic readiness, a hundred fifty-nine graduated with the traditional humanities group. Two, as I said before, with the arts pathway, forty-five of our students graduated with the languages other than English checkpoint B endorsement. Ninety-four with the math pathway and a hundred twenty-eight with a hundred uh with the science, tech and engineering pathway. But please keep in mind that there may be duplicates in here. Okay, so we wanted to show that, we wanted to show that our students are achieving great things. We also wanted to set a baseline as to, okay, here's where we are in June of twenty-five, where do we go from here? Um, as was mentioned, the last meeting, uh, we did see a slight decline in average daily attendance from ninety percent. Last school year to eighty-nine percent this year, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are therefore required. To reexamine, review and potentially revise the district attendance policy, so this is going to be one of my goals, I'll come back to it shortly. Uh, this year, I believe we finally settled on a very stable and hopefully consistent school climate and culture survey. Through K twelve insight and sociolitics. You may recall, back in the spring, uh, we asked for parents and caregivers to complete surveys, we asked our campus-based staff. To complete surveys, and we required uh for the students in grades five through twelve who were in attendance those days to complete the surveys. So there, I, I want to just show some high-level data from there, I did provide the board, I think it's like a hundred thirty-page document. I don't expect you to go through all that, this is kind of a high-level overview of that. Uh, one of the questions was, how would you rate the overall quality of the education at this school? So respondents, are you going through the lens of Monticello High School or M C Chase Elementary School or George C. Cook Elementary School, or what have you? So, uh. Seventy-two percent of our parents and caregivers. Uh. Eighty-three percent of our uh faculty and staff. And fifty-four percent of our uh secondary students felt it was good or excellent. Now, we were warned by the surveyors that, by the, the. Kind of vendors, that secondary students are some of the most skeptical group of people you can have doing surveys. So what you'll see throughout is secondary students, their ratings are, are low. They may be have, may have legitimate reasons for that, but nationwide it trends. Another question that uh we're careful to look at and, and consider is how would you rate the overall culture and climate at this school? Um, and here, the numbers are slightly lower, uh, sixty-two percent of parents and caregivers. Uh, sixty-five percent of staff. And forty-three percent of secondary students gave it a good or excellent rating. So there's some room for improvement here, and we kind of dig down deeper into the data to try to pinpoint. What might be driving that, and uh. Survey questions are done across five different domains. I would say that four of those domains, uh, we are relatively satisfied with, obviously, there's always room for growth. Uh, but around teaching and learning, student support, relationships, interactions with school leadership and family involvement. Uh, those numbers look relatively good. However, safety, security and student behavior. Particularly in the responses we received from secondary students for grades five through twelve. Uh, were relatively low, or at least certainly lower than what the other domains are. So we do think that these two pieces are connected, and if you look at the individual survey items, you will see that as well. Now, another interesting item. Uh, that was in the data, and I do want to bring to the board's attention. Uh. Parents, caregivers and staff were asked, if you know someone moving to the area with a school-aged child, how likely would you made to recommend this school or campus to them? So uh approximately thirty-five percent of our parents and caregivers and twenty-one percent of our campus staff. Gave that a rating of eight out of ten. So the way that they did the report is that promoters had, I'm sorry, nine out of ten. Had to give it a nine out of ten. Um. An additional twenty percent of parents and thirty-one percent of campus staff. Uh, rated it between seven and eight, I would tend to think that an eight out of ten is a little bit more than passive, but they don't categorize it that way. And then uh a little less than half of each respondent group gave it a six or less. So um, that's an interesting question that we'll continue to monitor. Um, and look in the future to see how we do here. Now, one of the areas that uh we also don't have, um, I'll say a standard measurement on is staff turnover. And this is linked to the goal that I'm going to present on uh retention, recruitment and morale. So we had to do some. Backtracking and a look back in WinCap, which is not the easiest thing to do, and I want to thank Shannon Lee Levinson and Erin Morse. And our H R department for putting this report together. But if we look at the number of its uh full-time instructional staff, which for the purposes tonight. We're categorizing as administrators and teachers. On May first, twenty twenty-four, we had three hundred forty-eight of them. Between May first of twenty-four and May first of twenty-five. Thirty-nine of them left the district, whether that be through resignation or retirement. Now, the reason why we're using these groups is because we could easily do a look back in WinCap. And also, uh, these are the positions where you would like to see as little, we don't want to see no turnover at all. But at the same time, if an aide or a teaching assistant was going back to school to get their teaching degree, we certainly uh want to support that and encourage that. So overall, there was an eleven percent change from May first of twenty-four to May first of twenty-five in these employee groups. This is again, data that now going forward. We can do a poll on May first of twenty-six. And have much more accurate data for these groups, so again, this is establishing a new baseline. And something that we intend on tracking, and I include in my goals that I'm presenting to the board. Another area of concern, we talked about this at great length at the board, but uh student uh food service quality. And again, as I mentioned before, it is a difficult thing to measure. And there's also moving parts relative to food service quality. So ideally, if uh we are providing. A high-quality food services, you're going to hopefully see an increase in student lunch participation. What this graph represents is over the past four years. Uh, school lunch participation across, you know, district-wide, K twelve. Um, and last year, there was a very slight increase, a, a slight increase in twenty-four, twenty-five. Compared to twenty-three, twenty-four. I use the, the bars at the very end, which are adjusted for annual uh average daily attendance. So we had a sixty-seven percent, a sixty-six point nine percent rate, which is about, uh, I think it's a point eight percent increase over the prior year. So yes, there was some anecdotal feedback that said things have gotten better in terms of quality. Um, but when we looked at the actual numbers, it was a very small increase. And again, this is something that we do look to improve upon for next year. So one of the things we did at the end of the, we did it mid-year, but also at the end of the year is we surveyed students at the middle school and high school. About what did they think about school lunches? Uh, so the first question they were asked, school lunches are better this year than they were last year, that's a little bit small for me, so I'm going to go to my notes. And. Approximately forty-one percent of them said, yes, it had improved. Twenty-one or thirty-one percent said, no, it hadn't, and then twenty-eight percent said they don't eat lunch. So based on that answer, then they were directed elsewhere. So another question that we asked them is, what did they, what was their favorite lunch, and surprised, you ready for this? It was pizza, um, they had all sorts of different pizzas, pizza with beans. Uh, cheese pizza, pizza with cheese, pepperoni and so on, you get the idea. Um, now that's important to know, however, uh, even though my goal is going to be improving on this number. Uh, we are not going to be serving more pizza. Uh, because it is not, we don't believe that it's a nutritious offering, even if it is Volgran trust. Um, so we do need to, and we, we also want to look at more nutritious, nutritious offerings for our students, and I'll come back to that. We also asked them, why don't you eat school lunch? And forty-eight percent of them said they don't like the lunches. We then asked them, uh, I would be eating lunch, school lunch, if what? Now, forty-seven percent of them said they would never eat school lunch. I would like to think that some of them might be able, we may be, might be able to convert. Uh, and then uh, uh, smaller percentages said, uh, the meals. Uh, lacked, uh, needed more flavor, uh, they wanted greater ethnic, ethnic offerings in terms of the meals offered. And uh, very few of them said they wanted more fresh ingredients, we're talking about middle school, high school kids. If you gave them pizza every day, they would eat it, but that's not why we're here. So um, I'll talk more about the strategies around that in a second, any questions before I get into the goals themselves? Some of the strategies. Alright. So goal number one, improving student attendance, uh, I'm seeking that by May first of next year, then our average daily attendance rate will be ninety percent. Uh, some of the uh strategies there, we haven't done a really deep dive onto as to why students are absent, we think we know. But uh, we're looking to form an ad hoc committee, uh, a student attendance committee that's going to do a deeper dive in that data. Uh, and also look at the attendance policy and then make proposed policy revisions to the board policy committee. Uh, by February first of next year. Uh, we will be reviewing the current attendance policy with our administrators prior to the start of the school year to make sure that they're fully versed on it, that they're following it. Uh, we will also be implementing a strategy, and I shared an article with the board in my report, it's not under the presentation, but my report oh one. On a, a postcard attendance notification system that is relatively inexpensive and relatively effective. Uh, I think they estimated a cost to be like four dollars per student to do it. So we will be starting that up, uh, it's, it'll probably be done quarterly, so we hope to have the first batch out in early November. Uh, and then lastly, for now, and again, this is a draft form, I'm looking for board feedback. Requiring principals to include average daily uh attendance data, attendance data updates in their monthly order forms. So we're going to ask them to report out on average daily attendance and chronic absenteeism rates in their schools every month. Any questions on attendance?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Um, a few months ago, I asked about. The letters that are sent home, like when the children are absent, absent, I know the high school does it, and I asked if it was cross. All the schools, and you said that you believed it was, so was it not being done across all the schools, and that's why you wrote this postcard policy here?
Uh, we, we don't know yet if it was done, and that would be part of the, the committee's work. What I'm doing by the, the uh postcard is that it's a much more. Non-threatening way of encouraging attendance. So think of it more like everybody gets a postcard. That'll have particular student data on it, and it'll also say, here are the benefits of attending school.
So it's not your child, or this, this, this very day is your child, the daughter failed, it's, it's not?
It, it's not as true, like the, the, the notification letter as much will still do that. For those students who reach those thresholds as the policy dictates, this is more like every family's going to get that notice, just to make sure they know what, where their kids at. So it would be an addition. Okay, Todd?
Thirteen thousand dollars a quarter, fifty-four thousand dollars for the year to put out postcards for attendance when we could do it. Electronically.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to see the merit in a postcard.
So the merits, go ahead, the, if you read the article, um, what they found is that in rural districts. Uh, that the postcard was, you know, kind of something tangible that the, the parent would receive at home. Um, and that that actually bore fruit for them. So.
Something he could stick to the fridge.
Something they can stick to the fridge, something they can. Share with their kid, uh, not a uh, a text message that they'll swipe right or left on, whatever that swipe is. Um, so that's why the, the, that's the merit behind the postcard.
So please, you know, one percent decrease. We have attendance officers, they're going to the homes.
In extreme cases. And, you know, there's, I, I guess that's the work of the committee, right, to, to measure that, how often, and, and what's the threshold for them to go to the house?
Now, if a child has been out for an extended period of time, is anyone going to check on the child?
Yes, so the policy will remain in effect, there's no deviation from that, the postcard proposal is just, you know, something different. So as we sit right now. Absent the work of that committee, uh, we're assuming that the policy is being vet followed regularly. Now, that committee is going to say it is or it isn't, or this in the policy works. This in the policy we do, but it doesn't work, and, and, and this in the policy, we should be doing more of it or not.
So now, are you going to include the attendance officers in the policy?
Yeah, it's a stakeholder uh group.
We are definitely going to include them, so I think it's a important thing to.
Absolutely, yeah, no, their feedbacks. Is there another question over here?
I have, I have a question. Um, I actually, I like the idea of the postcard. Um, my question is, I, I understand that there is a hard copy of the report card that goes home and maybe progress reports. Does progress reports also go through the mail, or does that go through the schools?
Uh, I don't know about five weeks, but certainly ten weeks still.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that, and then the same idea, it's, it's there, it's not anything that you just overlooked in your. In your weeks of parenting, and then all of a sudden, you have a golf shoot. Uh, but then the other thing I wanted to bring up was that the um elementary school teachers are already giving us our, their attendance reports. Correct, I mean, I'm familiar with seeing them from elementary, and that's more the disciplinary reports for the older grades is what I'm familiar with.
Sure, but you get those, I think, at the parent-teacher tablets, correct? The attendance reports.
No, I mean, like boards, like the, what we get.
Oh, in the board, yeah, this is just making a standard, the standard expectation and the standard forms.
Gotcha.
I think. I'll yield to Adrian, Adrian first.
Um, I also, just when we think about attendance, I know that sometimes things we can't control take over. Our communities, like when that stomach bug goes through, and so I don't know if there's a way to. I don't know if it's. Share that sto- that narrative so that we can better understand, so like if one school were to go to like. Eighty-six percent one month, but there was like a seventy-two hour stomach bug that went through the entire high school, I think it's just, I, the, if. Administrators could share those kinds of, I mean, I know anecdotal and like hard data are different things, but these are real experiences that happen to our communities, and so. If that can also be included, I think it could be helpful as we look at the numbers to think about. Like, what, why something may change significantly, and if you consider what they can include in those reports, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I would expect they, they, someone gives some passion to the trends.
Oh, but would that be with a letter sent in by the parents, and my child was out sick, the stomach bug, because if you don't have something to know, it's not sending it home.
But, but what principals, yeah, they, they, they hear things from the nurses, the teachers, and look, there's a fluke going around, so I would expect them to, you know, give some narrative that if there was a sudden death.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grodin.
So how can we incentivize the parents to actually buy in, I, like, could there be. Gradients of color, could there be like? Kids that get seventy percent of the time, it's a gray card, if you're going to get there eighty percent of the time, it's. The white of blue and white, if you are ninety percent of what is attainable with this goal or desired. That's a blue ribbon card, and also could it help businesses by having people buy in in the community that if this child presents this. And they have their name on it, that they would be able to get ten percent. Off their receipt.
Yeah, so I do believe that there's language in the attendance policy now where. Certainly, perfect attendance is recognized. Um, but to your point, you know, good attendance, you know, having kind of gradients of it.
Really good.
I don't believe that's in the policy presently, but that would be something that I would ask of this committee to consider, but I think it's a great idea. Okay, I'm just not prepared to give you today what those gradients might be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, I do want to move on, because there's a, two more goals to get through. Um, recruitment, retention and morale, as of May first, twenty twenty-six, approximately ninety-one percent. All instructional staff, that is, full-time administrators and teachers will have been retained since May first of twenty-five, so you may recall. The attrition rate, if you will, and there's not a standard around this. Um, but using that report earlier, that was around at eleven percent, so I'm looking to reduce that to nine percent. Uh, review and formalized interview and hiring procedures for administrative and teaching positions by November first, that will be done with. Uh, the administrative team. I will be visiting every classroom in the district during instructional time at least once, provide teachers with an opportunity for a follow-up meeting with me. Uh, I did kind of pitch the idea to staff back in the spring, just let them know that this is something that's coming forward. Um, and that's going to be more in effect next year. Create and publish a P L C milestone calendar by October first, twenty twenty-five, you know that we are investing heavily, and then, and then implement related P L C practices. We are investing heavily in moving towards a more professional learning community format, I've asked Ms. Carlin to work. We are investing heavily in moving towards a more professional learning community format, I've asked Ms. Carlin to work. Uh, with our administrators, teacher leaders, coaches, and Red Cardle consulting and developing, you know, what should we look for in terms of milestone? Uh, and PLC is important to recruitment, retention, morale, because it values teacher feedback. The core work of PLCs is teachers meeting at departments and grade levels. And sharing ideas about what's, you know, to the example Mr. Grove just raised about attendance, you know, that's the real, the real work of PLCs. Um, providing every first and second year teacher with at least one coaching cycle visitation from an instructional coach. Uh, last year, we were, we think we were able to get to every first year teacher. You may recall that we had turnover in the coaching rooms, and Mr. Teaser moved into an AP role, and, and Mr. Russo got on board, I think in March or April. Late in the year, um, so they are set, they are in place, same group of people. Uh, we're going to ask that they get through every first and second, every first and second year teacher gets that coaching cycle. Feature at least one staff member monthly in an It's Monday in Monticello segment called Staff Spotlight. So I, I'm surveying presently our administrators and department heads, our transportation and facilities. Asking them to nominate one person from their department. And, uh, at least once a month, I'll be interviewing that person, you know, based on the nomination process from their either principal or director. And talking to them about what, you know, what they do for the district and, and so on, okay? Uh, and then lastly, negotiate changes to the teacher and principal evaluation plans formerly known as APBR. Uh, so we've already begun discussions with our teachers about what this looks like. Uh, I think right now we're in a good spot with them. Uh, I'm a little reluctant to put a date on this because negotiations are difficult to predict, and I wouldn't want to be in a position where. Well, you know, I said by December first, we'd have this done, so let's hurry up and get it done, and it, it needs more thought than that, it's a pretty critical process. Questions, thoughts, feedback on this goal? Mr. Grove?
I love the staff spotlight, I love the, because it's so easy, instead of, like you said, swipe right or swipe left, is, is it really easy to share these things? Um, when I was at RSA conference in Lake Placid, Joe's, uh, San Felipe said that. Remember, everybody is somebody's kid, and that even goes for the teachers. So when it is that we're giving the teachers a spotlight, I do like that. The, I wonder if it is that we can give them. The note of writing online, but also that they unlock something, I don't care if it's a T-shirt. But something that, kind of like the, you know, right now the Twitter France is going on, so, you know, a spotlight shirt or like. I, I was spotted being awesome during this month. And that you keep it, that it's germane to what is being promoted, and that you hand that to them, um. The Dr. Joe San Felipe has it where in his school district, they have a signing with the balloons for the, every kindergartner, like they're going to college. So it, in order to make them something and that they're seen, because everybody loves being seen, I've always said, kindergartners through seniors, they like stickers. And getting attention, teachers are the same way. So if you could take that, that's awesome, but also have some kind of swag that they can have. That they got, that they were spotted doing amazing, I think could carry it, having. My shirts from sixth grade to twelfth grade of perfect attendance here at Monticello. I can tell you from experience, not everybody got one.
Yep, so, um, yes, I mean, that's the short answer. Um, I think some of our schools and administrators do it, do it at varying levels right now. Um, but that is something that I think, you know, look, we're, we're bringing back PBIS in the middle school and high school. Uh, we could certainly roll in some staff recognition with that, and I can certainly. You know, for any guests of the show, they get some party gifts or, you know, something that I could, I could present to them as well. But I think, to what you're talking about, it's difficult from my level to recognize that in. What's going on in the, in our schools, but I think our administrators and our directors can and should, so.
Oh, yes, promotion from within, yes, absolutely agree. But if they're gonna make it in the spotlight.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
How can they, how can they hold that for a moment and people know, yeah, they were shining at this moment, and then they're gonna wanna work for it some other time?
What about staff, staff spotlight, parking spot?
So they do, yeah, and so, I, I know Rutherford has one, um, I know Rutherford has one, I think Cook has one as well. Um, but yeah, we can do that, that's.
Okay, absolutely.
Good drive with.
I, I just want to say, bullet point number two, visiting every classroom, I think is really great.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really just, it's very important to, to feel connected to admin. So I, I just, I just really appreciate that, and then just to say that you're gonna allow an opportunity to have a follow-up meeting, that's important too. Because you don't know, you know, what you're walking into, and somebody likes to explain. Perhaps if, uh, if it was going well, or if it was going not so well, is it a chance to relive it?
And I don't think completely at their discretion, I'm not gonna require a meeting, but you know, if they, if they want, just contact Beth and we'll set something up. And, and I do recognize, you know, what, when the superintendent walks into places, it can be a disruption, and I don't want it to be that. So I think early on, it'll be a little, you know, some tense moments, but, uh, once it becomes part of the routine, I think it'll be good.
I think that's great, and then if you wouldn't mind for both, the first bullet point, when it says review and formalize interview and hiring procedures?
Yes, so really just talking with administrators about how's it feel, I, I think this number overall. Like right now, this summer, knock on wood, has not been nearly as tense as for me as what the last two summers were in terms of power. I think we're moving in the right direction there. Um, but I do want us to look at, alright, how are we doing this? Uh, you know, making sure everyone's on the same page, and it's new administrators, and just making sure they have a document in their hands that's very clear on the process. It gets a little gray sometimes with, are we hiring a full-time teacher, are we hiring a substitute, what about this person who doesn't have certification yet? Um, just making sure we're all on the same page. And, and, and it has some like expected timelines too, uh, you know, by ten days after the initial posting, who knows what, think of it that way.
Okay.
Alright, um, oh, what happened? Can you go to the next one, please? Alright, food services, so increasing the lunch participation, participation rate from sixty-seven percent to sixty-nine percent. Uh, these are the different strategies that I'm thinking of as of today, I'll be eating lunch in at least one school once per week. Um, will be input, we're moving up the timeline through the USDA, uh, the sodium and the added sugar, we talked about that a couple meetings ago. Uh, moving that timeline up to having those in place by February first of twenty-six. Uh, sending food service staff members to, there's an August twenty, August twenty twenty-five training, I shared that with the board in my report. And then looking at additional conference days for them to be trained. A footnote to that, in the cafeteria staff contract, right now they're only required to attend one conference day a year. So if we're to do more than that, then there'd be additional compensation, but at least on that one conference day, they're here. Uh, focusing more on food prep, menu options, uh, and, and food service in general. Providing and exploring new menu options at monthly unit cook meetings, so every month. Uh, the director of food services and our school lunch manager, right now they meet with unit cooks. And having front and center on the agenda of those meetings, uh, new menu options. Continuing with the surveys of middle school and high school students twice a year next year. And then review and update the board wellness policy, beginning at the board policy committee meeting on September fourth. So, uh, Mr. Jasper leads the wellness committee, uh, they, I think you heard when, uh, Sal Monade presented. That they did an update to the wellness policy for the board's consideration, uh, that, Mr. Jasper and that committee. Or that policy draft will be on the policy committee meeting, uh, for the September fourth meeting. Questions, thoughts, and again, the participation rate, the reason why this one is measurable. Two, as we increase school lunch participation, we increase the, the refund and the revenue back to the district. Which allows us to put more money into food servicing quality, okay, so think of that as the rationale behind it, Mr. Grove?
I like the improve the quality part, I do also think, um, the new menu options at monthly unit cook meetings. Could you also spotlight those and have, dare say, a picture contest? That one of the five schools, presentation of a dish, so that when it puts, it gets put on there, it's shot with a nice food filter. And it looks appeasing and pleasing to the eyes, and then we're gonna think the taste buds would follow. So that we can highlight that it is a highlight, and kids are like, I'm gonna go to school, cuz it's definitely.
So, yes, I, I think right now our thinking behind this, incorrect or wrong, is that. The school lunch manager or the, the, uh, food services director would, would work with the unit cooks, say, alright, we're doing. Um, you know, new pull pork sandwiches, whatever.
Whatever.
And, and they're going to kind of walk them through that, um, but we can look at, you know, ways of making that more incentivizing for, for the unit cooks to.
I know that Courtney has done that one or two times on the, uh, Facebook page.
Yeah, there is one right now that's.
But if there's more of a push, they're gonna have an awareness.
Rebursement for any of the breakfast option?
Yes, right?
Yeah, we have reimbursement for breakfast.
The issue with breakfast is, uh, the time, like getting kid, like in some schools, it's really challenging, you know, if they're riding the bus. Getting in line, getting their food and getting to the classroom. Um.
Do we, we're having milk for breakfast?
Yes, we do. Um, so it, it, in some schools, like the middle school, for example, they'll grab and they'll go to a, a classroom. The high school, they'll grab and eat from the cafeteria, they'll, they'll sit down and eat in cafeteria. And then at the elementary schools, depending on what time they get in line, they can go into the cafeteria, and in some cases they're grabbing and going to the classroom. So that's why I'm kind of keeping it to the lunch, I think that's a, a much more stable number and a way to count, uh, way to tally our, our ball. Alright, and then the last one, uh, expanding our graduation pathway opportunities by May first. The district will have state ed-approved career and technical education pathways, business and marketing, and hospitality and tourism. Um, now, we, I, we met today, uh, Ms. Carlin, Ms. Gore, Ms. Anrucha and me. Uh, to review that application process, we're very confident in our, uh, business and marketing pathway. We think we already have the personnel, already have the classes, uh, we just need to kind of look through the curricula and, and get that up to speed. But we think we have a very strong application there. The application for hospitality and tourism will expand outside of, um, business and marketing to include. Uh, put the family consumer science courses and maybe retooling some of those. So this one might be a stretch to get to, we're very confident that we'll get at least one. Uh, obviously discussing the program applications with administrators and teacher leaders. Uh, the deadline is October first, so you'll have a good idea by October first, the status of these applications. Uh, promoting CTE programs to students and families during scheduling and spring twenty-six meetings, cuz that's when we do talk about scheduling. Offering new course electives in hospitality and tourism in the spring of twenty-six. So we think that, you know, we have the capacity to maybe, uh, tweak some courses, especially in family consumer sciences. More of the culinary side of it than, uh, maybe the parenting course, for example. Uh, providing professional development for our guidance counselors on various graduation pathways, these are constantly evolving. So giving them the professional development they need so they can speak fluently on it. Providing professional development for curriculum directors, high school department chairs, and really administrators too. On the new New York State portrait of a graduate, a new one came out on Monday.
It's a big wheel.
So, yeah, uh, they reduced it to six instead of seven, right, so it's new, so trying to keep on top of that. And then lastly, and we do, we think we do some of this now, but producing and publishing graduating pathway videos for parents. So just quick, three-minute video, here's the individual arts assessment pathway. For more information, contact your, your child's guidance. Questions on this goal? And I, I do need to tell you, I may come back to you in two weeks, and that one might be the goal itself, I might equivocate a little bit on it, but. Right now, we think we can do two, is that right?
Excited.
Yes, so, um, if you have any other feedback, please do share it with me. My intention is to have the goals document as an agenda item, action item for your consideration at the office. Thank you, folks, thank you, Ms. Carlin, Ms. Vail and Ms. Wolf.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. I don't flash these going on. Alright, so, uh, moving on from there, we have the adoption of our consent agenda, so I'll pass this over to Ms. Greco.
I'd like to motion that we, um, approve consent agenda items, F one to M two as a group.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Jersey, any discussion, all in favor?
I'd like to motion that we approve consent agenda items, F one to M two as a group.
Do you have a second on that? Ms. Jersey, any discussion, all in favor? I think we went redundant on that, that's my fault, I apologize.
Now they're double approved.
Moving on from there, um, we have information reports and discussion, so we start off with board roundtable. Um, I'll start with Ms. Jersey.
Um, I have nothing to report.
Ms. Stalter?
No report this time.
Ms. Riley?
No report.
Ms. Squizdowski?
No report.
Ms. Greco?
No report.
Ms. LaRusso?
Been quiet.
Mr. Groden?
Well, let's talk. Um, just got back from Lake Placid from Rural Schools Association of New York, and it was amazing. I have just shared with the board, one of the things connected with the building safe and successful learning environments for brave spaces for collaboration. Specifically with people that may or may not be reluctant in the face of this new. Seven parse down to six-piece wheel on how we can have our kids graduate. Uh, it was amazing done by Jessica Sheridan, Assistant Superintendent for Staff Curriculum, and my friend Erica Ebert, Staff Development Trainer. Um, you, I think you're gonna love it, because it goes for whenever you have a conversation. Here are the things that, let's have a framework of how to talk first, before you can even address other things. Less emotions get in the way of logic and speaking rationally. I think it's really amazing, so that's why y'all have a sh- shared copy. Um, the other thing was my second time meeting Dr. Joe San Felipe. Influencer with seventy thousand followers on X, he is superintendent of the year, I. I never have said enough about him, I've always tried to channel him, Wendy accused me of being mini him at the conference. It's very nice because during the keynote speak, speech which he gave, which was over an hour and twenty minutes. He asked if anybody uplifted a colleague, you know I raised my hand. So I said how I did that to my work wife, he stopped me, gave me the microphone, he stepped back from me, and during this speech. I'm going to be in his, a produced video, where he says, I'm going to make this video, I'm going to shoot it. I'm going to put it together, and then how would she feel that I send her the link? That's the part that I'm talking about, about when people are seen. So this has been what my tenants have been when I taught, and then to hear it and get reaffirmed by a nationally known speaker. Author of four books, it was an amazing shot in the arm. Curling, thank you, Ms. Plus, for signing me up for that. I, my wife's like, no, you're just gonna be mark, you're just gonna be networking, no, I'm on ice. And it was great, fifty pounds sliding the rocks down. So it was really something else, um, there was so much information. The networking was absolutely amazing with the executive director of NISP, with the member services, Barry and Whistle. It was an amazing, because it was such a good vibe of people that were sharing. How to get students involved, how to become better, how to do with superintendents and board trustees and support staff. So I was just very ant, and that's my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Groden. Did Wendy have a good time?
She had a really good time.
Alright, um, so I have a couple items, um. We spoke previous, at previous meetings, um, Ms. Greco is going to be leaving us shortly. Um, we spoke at the beginning of the meeting, um, officially, her, the letter's not in yet. But officially, her last meeting will be our August seventh meeting, so she's going to put in a letter of resignation for August eighth. Um, we are sorry to see you go, but while your seat's still warm, Mr. Cologne has agreed and accepted to accept that seat. And be, um, appointed by the board for the remainder of, um. Next year, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, until the next election where he will have to run again. Which I believe was inevitable anyways, because your board seat was going to be up as is. So Mr. Cologne has agreed to, um, accept that, um, appointment by the board. I have reached out to Anne Marie, she's putting together a, um, another orientation packet similar to what. Uh, me and Melinda did the other day. Um, I'll coordinate with Wendy to, uh, do Mr. Cologne's orientation. Um, at some point before the, what would end up being the August twenty-first meeting. Um, so he's fully on board, um, orientated, and get him logged in to, uh, the system. Access to Board Docs computer and all that type of stuff. So, um, that at present is all moving forward, um, kind of as we. So um, that at present is all moving forward, um, kind of as we previously discussed. Another item that I was looking into from our previous meeting was um, trying to get some dates put together for a board retreat. Um, really circling around what the board is looking for from. Our principals and directors and our monthly reports. Um, when I spoke to um, Anne, I'm gonna murder her name and I apologize, Lazuski. Um. We had a nice discussion, probably about thirty minutes long, um, and we did talk about how next year more than likely, we're going to be revisiting our. Um, vision, mission and goals and kind of getting that back into the forefront because that's going on about five or six years at this point. And how. A di- a retreat this year and speaking of what we're, what we'd like to see from our principals and directors. Can really guide us into that next retreat of what our goals are going to be. So what, what information as a board are we looking for to help us next year? Really develop those goals and mission statement and vision, so we kind of have a clear picture and we're going into it with some forethought. So any information that we're looking for, whether it's uh, climate and culture or hard data. Uh, discipline data, attendance data, um, we can ask for that, assemble it at beginning of the year, get that information back from. Our uh, principals and directors, and then that way next year when we do that other part of it, we have um, a very well informed, um. Database to pull off of, so when we develop those items, we have the information that we really need to do it. So. She has dates in July, um. But. July's already almost over, um, I'm booked July basically all the way through. Um, I don't do scheduling, my wife does and she's very. Stripped.
Hmm.
Um. They had August fif- she had August fifteenth and twenty sixth and September eighth and ninth.
When's the first football game?
On about the eighth and ninth.
August fifteenth, you said?
Hold on one sec. Um, yes, it was August fifteenth and twenty sixth is what she had. It for like this summer, kind of getting into the beginning of September. And September eighth and ninth. The eighth and ninth is a Monday, Tuesday, so that wouldn't be around any football games. And the fifteenth and twenty sixth. One's a Friday and one's a Tuesday.
I cannot do the fifteenth.
I can do the twenty sixth. Anybody say August twenty sixth?
What?
Not available in August.
Not available in August. I could always reach back out to her and ask for uh, like maybe a Saturday or something like that. Um, we might have to reach a little bit further into September or October. Is there any consensus on like, let's just. Randomly out of the hat, say like. September twentieth or October fourth or anything like that? Or do you wanna come back at the next meeting and kind of try to consolidate? Or I forget what the polls call. I could talk to her and ask her what weekend she has available, put an email out and we could just work it that way. I'd send a text out to everybody. Everybody go look at your emails because we need to get her booked. So we can actually solidify this. You wanna go about it that way?
Yeah.
So I'll try and get her for a uh, a Saturday, starting at like, hopefully like eight, nine o'clock or something.
Um. We wouldn't have Reardon because we've had it before because we have a history.
Um, when I talk, spoke with her, she's a. A retired principal, um, down south. She came up to New York State. She started working for NISBA. Um.
Okay.
She seemed. Uh, I mean, I know we've done Mr. Reardon before. I just figured it was a little bit of a different vibe.
Hmm.
Um, to lead that discussion, I don't think we're doing any incredibly heavy lifting, but um, she was actually. She actually got kind of giddy because she was like, this is very explicit. And I was like, well, this is kind of what we're looking for. She was like, ooh, this is like really kind of. She was like, ooh, and she was actually kind of getting excited about like the whole thing, just talking about it. She was like, oh, this isn't some broad thing. And I was like, no, no, we're, we pretty much need this thing. And she was like, ooh, this is good, good stuff. And she, and when we had the discussion, she's the one who brought it around like, oh, when you develop your goals, we can have this and it can lead into that and. I was like, well, my kid's haircut's done and I gotta leave the barber shop, so I I kind of have to cut this, but you know, after forty minutes, it was what it was. But I'll reach out to her and um, see if I can't get a Saturday. It seems like more than likely it would be towards the end of September, beginning of October. Um, so as long as everyone's cool with that, I'll push out a text to let you know that the email's out there so everybody can look at their calendars. Right? Fantastic. Moving on from there, um, we have our director reports. It's summertime, I can only imagine a few of them are taking vacation. Um, any comments, concerns or anything like that regarding director reports? I've been getting emails and uh, pushouts from the school that uh, the fall sports season is uh, signups are out there. Um, I know the kids been practicing for voluntary workouts. Um, so there's been quite a bit of activity with athletics. They're getting ready to tear that field up top.
Can't wait.
All right.
Then we're gonna get all the parents who wish they had turf to have their kids wanna be here beyond that turf.
There you go.
Be awesome.
Um, as I mentioned earlier, I'll uh, forward on to the entirety of the board, the uh, correspondence that a few of us received. Um, and I'll push that out to your emails. Uh, moving on from there, policy committee update, um, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So uh, just very briefly, the policy committee will have its first meeting of the new year, uh. At our next meeting, Aug- uh, August seventh at five thirty PM, and we're here, correct, Ms. Plus? Uh, and secondly, I wanted to uh, propose again to the board, uh, an updated grading systems policy. And uh, at the last meeting, it was a four-four vote over that proposed policy. Uh, we took that information back, Ms. Carlin and me, and we discussed it and uh. Made a uh, a slight change, uh, that we think uh, we'd like the board to consider and think would reflect. Uh, the interests of everyone around uh, the issue certainly of of the submission of late work. So uh, the change that we are uh. We put into that changed policy, which there are significant changes from the existing policy. Would be to limit the uh, penalty free grace period from five days to two days. And then uh, days thereafter, between days three and five. Uh, the teacher would have a discretion to uh, put a penalty up to twenty five percent in total on the assignment. Now, why that number? If you look in the existing policy. Uh, it states that if an assi- this is the current policy. If an assignment is late, points may be reduced by no more than five percent a school day and no more than twenty five percent total. Now then after the fifth day, following the original due date, the teacher may then record a zero for the assignment if it wasn't submitted. But then you do have language in the policy for a student to have an opportunity to redo the assignment for a higher grade without help. So um, we believe that a, a two-day grace period. Would recognize the diverse needs of our students. We have families where kids do multiple things after school, they take multiple courses, they have all sorts of homework and in addition to extracurricular activities. We have students who have to work after school uh, to provide money for their households. We have students who are caregivers for younger siblings. Um, and you may recall that the initial sentiment of the. The committee that was formed to look at this policy and suggest revisions on it, they wanted a five-day penalty-free period. I think um, you know, after our last meeting, uh, we believe that that uh, probably wasn't possible nor. Uh, you know, might send the wrong message too. So we believe that a, a two-day grace period would be appropriate. Um, we do ask that the board seriously consider and hopefully approve this policy so that. Uh, we can make appropriate changes and communicate those changes. To our uh, families and staff before the start of the school year. Um. I recognize that there may be pieces of this policy that aren't in agreement with everyone. And I would say that there is probably not a grading policy out there. Uh, that there's uh, not a board event that, you know, members don't agree on every single codicil of it. Uh, there are parts of this policy that, you know, I think are. Are lacking and and maybe perhaps we should do meta- do better or do more or do differently. Uh, or parts of this policy that don't reflect. You know, some of the leading research out there on grading. But at the same time, I'm, you know, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. And I think what we are putting on the table tonight for the board's considerations. That only recognizes the work of the committee and what they brought back from the constituents they represented. Uh, but also is an improvement over a, a current policy that, you know, in, in some ways. Uh, doesn't really reflect. Addic- you know, i- is not an accurate reflection of what student achievement is towards the standards of those particular courses. And. I believe we're doing a better service to our students and our families. Uh, by having a grade that is more reflective, a grading policy that is more reflective of student achievement towards the standards of those courses. This isn't perfect, this isn't uh, it's not a one-to-one accurate reflection, but it certainly is a step forward. Um, and uh, it's for those reasons that I am asking that the board reconsider this for adoption tonight. Uh, also for adoption tonight is the code of conduct. You had the hearing earlier, uh, again, there's slight changes to that, but this team. Uh, really needs to be adopted soon if we were to get this out in, into the family's hands and on time.
Any questions regarding policy update to uh, top?
In the introduction, it states that Minnesota Central School District is committed to creating and maintaining high standards of education for students in schools. That's in the introduction. What I just heard is that five days can pass. And I'm gonna echo. Trustee LaRusso's. That when she goes to work, if she doesn't have something done on time, she doesn't get credit for it. Now that's work. Are we trying to prepare kids for the real world? Are we trying to be lenient? I get that. However, they're still able to get a C, a passing grade. Even if it's five days late and even if it's so, it's massaging the words. I'm trying to see, can you show me how they could get a seventy-five before they can get a seventy-five now? For not delivering within five days. I can understand two, three days grace. Five days? Based on the commit, how is that maintaining high standards? They, the two seem juxtaposed in definition directly.
I think the incentive here is to get students to actually do the work. And so that um, the penalty is not so great. That students just throw up their hands and decide not to do the work because, look, the most I can get out of it is a fifty anyway, why bother? We would rather them do the work and even, you know, to your point, that's assuming they get everything correct in that assignment. And I would argue that if they are turning in an assignment and they get every question right. Then that would have demonstrated that they at least know the standards of that particular assignment. So I, I get what you're saying. Look, I, I have deadlines too. We all have deadlines, right? Um. But within that three to five day window. They still, they have to turn it in by the fifth day, otherwise on day six, it is a, a zero and there's no makeup opportunity. That's the new policy. The old policy was that, well, it goes to zero unless you do a, a redo. Right?
Right.
So it is an improvement. Um, does it meet uh, with some people might believe, you know, is some people, a- again, should be more than twenty-five percent. Some people, we heard this on the committee, uh, don't believe there should be any of them. So we are trying to, to strike that balance and again. It's, it's, it's difficult to put in a grading policy that every person has a, you know, wholeheartedly agrees.
Sure, 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 sure. Seventy-five though, okay.
But again, they'll assume that they get everything right on that assignment. Right? To get that seventy-five.
Which you hoping was five days late, they would take the time to do it, but they're also five days late, so you know.
Well, that's homework, it's kind of worth ten percent.
Well, there's that.
But isn't that al- isn't that also assisting the, you can fail four classes and still play varsity?
You can't fail four classes and still play varsity.
You can't be on a roll for the team?
Not at four classes.
Not at four classes.
You can fail three classes here at Minnesota?
Then you're still not playing. It was two.
Not pretty, yeah, you're, you're. Able to practice it. Three.
So I guess I'll reiterate that I think taking the whole redo out of the policy. Is going to do harm to our students. It's going to impact our extracurriculars tremendously. Because we redid eligibility policy because, I mean, they. To help our extracurriculars with redos intact, so we take the redos out. And now, what's gonna happen to our extracurriculars? They're gonna tank. Um, also you have classes that. I mean, they just might not get the material and they think they do it and then get the, get the test back and. They can't redo it. Uh, I, I just think that we go from one extreme to the other. So now we have cell phones, no cell phones, redos, no redos. The men- the social emotional. Distraction that's gonna happen during the course of the year is gonna be enormous. I don't know why there can't be a happy medium in between. I've had. Either do it, uh, you can redo a test or a quiz once. I don't agree with the however many times you need to do it, but once, but. There also be, I've had teachers say, you know, you. It's, it's locked, the grade's locked, but at the end of the quarter, I'll open back up and you can redo three, redo your three lowest. That would be an improvement over what the current policy is.
But Teresa's previously, i- if it, it's not in explicitly said in the policy, but. It's gonna be up to departments to figure out what that is, and maybe the math department says, look, I have three extra credits. There's three weeks left. You can replace your three lowest grades with these three extra credits. But that's up to the department and it, it's not explicitly in there that there is reduce, but it's not explicitly in there that there's not reduce. So at that point, we're leaving it to the people in those departments and hey, maybe social studies says. We're not doing it, we have too much stuff to cover. But if I'm giving out written, written assignments in phys ed. Because somebody has a broken ankle, look, you can, you've got leeway on this kid, you know, you can do it twice.
Well, the old policy said the number of additional retakes redo is permitted for one assessment or assignment is at the discretion of the teacher, so they had the discretion last year.
Right, but there's language in that, in the current policy where the redo is an entitlement. That the student has a right to redos. Um, what we're attempting to show here is give the teachers the professional courtesy and discretion. To uh, say, you know, look, this, this was this assignment and you, you failed this quiz. But you know what? Next week we have another quiz. And we're gonna be testing these things and I wanna help you so you're prepared for next week's quiz. Rather than, you know, go back, redo the assignment and you'll get a passing grade, you know, I've already given the answers out, but you know, you have a right to a redo as it says in, in the policy. And that's currently the way that the current system is operating.
If you take the quiz, you fail the quiz, you don't have a redo, that information that's on that quiz is gonna be on your regions. Why haven't gone back to it to figure out how to do it? So how am I gonna accomplish it?
Because you're probably gonna have an end of the chapter test that has the same questions on it. That's what typically happens in, in certainly the core content sources. There's never, I, I mean, I, as a former social studies teacher. I can't think of tests I get, quizzes I gave where that question didn't pop up again later in the year.
In some different.
Right, and I won't know it at that time either.
Uh, and, and that's similar in math. I mean, I know math is, is certainly built on previous language or previous language.
Dr. Evans, if I may, I, I can tell you departments have met already. Not knowing that this policy was going to be brought to you in the summer and they didn't wanna have to hurry up and do the work when they got back. So there already is a redo procedure in place that departments have worked on. With the one redo and that the student has to do something to show, not that they're just gonna retake the task without having done any work. Whether that be turning in an assignment that shows they prepared for the quiz, you know, again, or the test. Uh, meeting with the teacher and getting some private, you know, tutoring or tutoring during lunch, whatever works for both the student and the teacher. Those things are all ready, ready to go. Um, so as soon as this policy goes through, if it goes through. Those procedures will go in place, so except for homework, any major assignment will have one redo us allowed. Per major assignment for students in every department. That's what they've been working on.
Right, I mean, that was also in the previous policy. So that's why we're removing it.
Correct.
I, we've gone back and forth. Yeah, can we just please separate it out for me?
Yes, please.
My issue is. We're supposed to be um, sending our students up for success once they leave us and go on, and I feel that. We need to have deadlines, not two days later, three days later, it's due on this day, the day after it's estimated points, the day after it's, it's estimated points off. But we have to teach our children, so for me, that's, that's my. My issue with this. We're not. So I want this pulled down as well.
You can vote it on separately.
Any other discussion surrounding policy committee update?
I guess I'd like for, um. I think that. As a board, we ask or we're interested in having the policy reviewed. It was understanding of administration of the board that this can be an emotional thing. I'm an emotional idea for our board members and our families, and so with that in mind. A staple could hold a committee. A stakeholder could hold a committee who's representing a lot of people and. Perspectives was put together and they brought us something and I just feel like we are mainly kind of cracking. On their work, they worked really hard, they went to stakeholders, they reached out to the community, they have all kinds of people and. Who are we to say? That their perspective isn't valued or important or like, why are we more important than them? And at the very least, this gives us an opportunity for to move forth. From a better place, it might not be the perfect place, it might not be the best place, but I think we are missing opportunity to. To set a new starting line for review and in the last meeting, we talked about. Um. I'm sorry, whoever I'm not gonna make credit to because I don't remember who said it, but. Um the having a review of it to like check in on it, how it's doing.
I think it was Wendy.
And who was it?
Wendy.
Okay, Wendy, Wendy out there. Um and. I think that is a really strong idea and to do it semester, because I know someone is like, why can't we do it at the beginning of a, at the end of the quarter, but. The way the cycles work, like you need a semester, so that's first and second marking period, because sometimes. The way the classes and the credits are reported, and so I just. Um. I think that we need to trust. And maybe that's hard for us, but I think we need to trust the stakeholders that went out, did the work, checked with their peers. People who are doing the work and say, like, let's give their work a chance, because it's definitely better than what we have. And so I think we need to set up a new opportunity for review and reflection. And that would be this, and I'm not saying it's perfect and our, like, I don't love everything about it. But it is better and it's stronger and it has the opportunity to continue to be better after reflection and review. And to give people a chance to live in it a little bit. And I think we have to trust the people that we. Put in place. Throughout the district, all the way from parents to staff. And so I guess that's what I would ask as peers, that we should trust them, because we agreed to appoint them.
I kind of echo Adriana's sentiment and kinda to. Talk about um Victoria's point, I understand that yes, in certain professions and points of life. No matter where you are, there are hard deadlines. Um but I also work in a field where. I've been told numerous times by people that run multimillion dollar firms, that I'm gonna have something on. August twenty-second and it doesn't show up. And it shows up a week later and they tell us why they couldn't get it and we deal with it and we move on to the next thing. Um so I understand that there's particular things that are hard deadlines, but I also understand that. There's many professional circumstances where that hard deadline gets moved because of cert- good circumstances outside of um our control. Um I think the two days is kind of allowing a little bit for that, after that, there's a penalty. Um we're talking about homework. Um as you said, it's ten percent of the grade, a little bit of leeway, I mean, that's really to reinforce uh. Classroom work and um instruction that was given in the classroom. Um so I think it kinda goes to that and, you know, just echoing uh Adriana sent to. Um anything else regarding the policy committee update, Ashley?
Uh I'll just breeze through and say that from the jump, I had issues with certain parts of this and whether I go through it or not. Um I I just wanna say, one area where I asked for change um was changed. And it was that department chair was in a meeting with the teacher and the principal if the grade were to be adjusted. So I appreciate that that change was made. Uh I appreciate that it was changed from five days to two days. I think that 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 our concerns were heard and I. Even though I I I appreciate when there's a committee that gets together and tries to spend their time and reach out and. Get a grading policy established outside of the the board members. I appreciate their work, but it doesn't mean that I, you know, will agree with everything they have in here and obviously I'm gonna have to voice my opinions if I disagree. And being a teacher, a high school teacher for several years, I had a perspective on this that. Might be different than a parent perspective or maybe administrator perspective. Maybe student perspective, so um I just, my main issues just to say, just. Little bits here was that um the twenty minutes, no more than twenty minutes of work for class daily, I would have liked to seen it more. Be a cumulative weekly amount of time, maybe no more than two and a half hours per week and then that would give some flexibility. I also wasn't really keen on the ten percent um being the cap of what your homework could. Amount to um I'd be more inclined to be like, you know, up to twenty percent or something like that. Um and that's because uh I wanted the kids to take it seriously, the students to take it seriously and not say, oh, it's just ten percent, so I'm not gonna really do it. Um this the um but what we talked about with the. At the beginning, when it's talking about uh teachers having five days to return the work, I can see that that's ideal. But um sometimes when it comes to work being turned in late. Uh then it makes it more difficult for a teacher to gather up all the materials at once and bring it all at one time.
Yep.
So so I would say that 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 was probably a bigger concern than the the lateness necessarily is. To hold teachers' feet to the fire to say, listen, you've got five, five days, however, you're not gonna get everything until maybe ten days or so. Either way, um those are my concerns, but I I do appreciate that the change was made. For the department chair to be involved in meetings and I was, um I appreciate that the. The date was through, the five days was changed to two days. So I think that that's good and then the explanation about if you only give them half credit, not seventy-five percent, maybe they won't do it at all. And you definitely want students to be doing the work, so that's really important, so that they can be more prepared for quizzes, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Um. Anything else on the policy committee update?
Nothing about that, but on the meeting agenda, it says five P M, school library. Is it five or five thirty for the next meeting?
Five thirty.
Okay, because the meeting agenda says five, then I'm just.
Ms. Foss, it's five thirty, correct? Five thirty. Good call. Uh moving on, capital project update.
Thank you, President Crumley, so there's a lot of work going on right now uh across several of our uh schools and fields. Um I've shared some photos, they were taken a week ago, so they probably changed by now. Uh and we do know of at least three change orders that are coming the board's way. The first one, we already talked about. Uh back in May, that's regarding the soil conditions of the field. We have a firmer number on that, it's gonna be around a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. So we're just waiting for the paperwork to be done. Remember, we said it would probably be around a hundred fifty. Um there's some interesting things we're told that they pulled out of that field. Um if it wasn't a licensed landfill uh previously, it it certainly was serving that purpose for some people. Um so uh that's gonna be around a hundred thirty-two thousand. Uh we are finding patches of asbestos around fittings at Cook. Uh that's kinda to be expected when you're tearing out uh furnishings, walls, windows and so forth. So when this was written, when I wrote this on Monday, uh that ballpark was around twenty-nine thousand, but we found some more. A little bit more, so these are like little pieces here or there and they have to be abated, we have to do it. Um once they have kind of all of that done at Cook, then they'll probably get a a a firmer number, but it's. Gonna be north of twenty-nine thousand at this point. Um and then, uh lastly, spray foam insulation. So this was, I'm I'm gonna mix these up. So at Cook Elementary. There was spray foam insulation budgeted for. Uh in the new, the rooms that they're taking out the uh storefront windows in, but there wasn't a paint coating. That a special paint coating that needs to be applied to it. So for that, uh they're going to use the allowance to do that. At Chase, however, which is on the old capital project that's tasked for. That insulation was not part of that plan, it was the old bat insulation. However, for approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars, we could do a change order. Uh and go to the spray foam and have the applied paint for that. So that was discussed at the capital project committee last week and I think the consensus of the committee was go ahead with that, it'd be certainly easier to maintain. It would be consistent with the cook rooms. Uh so more to come on that. Uh tonight, the board is uh acting on bid recommendations for the fieldhouse at our new Panther Stadium. And BBS is beginning design work uh for phase two of our capital project, which is the roof and facade at Saint John Street. Classrooms at Rutherford Elementary, though that's going to be relatively the same, uh and a new concession stand at our high school softball.
Any questions surrounding our capital project update?
Do you happen to give us numbers um so we know what we have for timing and scoreboard? He was going to get together and.
Nothing new since last.
Are we still on track for completion date?
As of right now, yes, but just know that at Cook, what that might mean is the rooms are safe for occupancy and for stuff to happen. But the furniture, the 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 new casework might not be fully installed yet. Okay, so we're still on track as we sit currently.
With. There's no curveballs. With relation to what Ms. Jersey just said, um I forwarded everybody the picture that Daktronics, who we are co- currently contracted with. That there's, it's very fortunate, we have that for the LED outside welcoming people to the high school, is the same company that would. Do the video display for us, scoreboard. And is also the exact company that you have pictured on your phone that is over the Olympic rink in Lake Placid. So it's a very high caliber deal and I'm very glad we already have contracted with Dak.
Who is the telephonic BBS that does the sports fields? He was on the bottom, right?
Ken, isn't it?
John, 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 yeah.
Cause didn't you state that um once the field kind of actually starts. Being realized a little bit more and somewhere the excavation is done, they'll have a lot better idea of what numbers actually are kind of floating around.
Yeah, so they're, I think their intention right now is to do the, what they call footings or piers for a sign that could be the video sign. So that's gonna go in either way.
Yep.
And I think the the sentiment was, once. Things get more settled, literally and metaphorically in the field. Then they'll know how much money is kinda left and the extent to which a a video board could go in.
Cause that does look like the interior concrete curb has been poured.
Yeah, yeah, that's already in, which is good. Let's go.
All right, um any other questions regarding capital project update? Moving on from there, we have upcoming events. A little bit later, uh s- in the summertime, a lot of MBK summer literacy math camps. Um so thank you to everybody putting those together. Uh community events, um quite a few uh articles there. About um staff and students doing wonderful things. Do we have any questions or comments from the public?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Moving on from there, we have superintendent updated information, I'll toss this back over to Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, and it's my pleasure to introduce some new members of our family, our faculty and staff who have uh. Uh weathered the storm with us this evening and uh thank you for coming out on this uh warm summer night and uh as I call your name out. If you just stand up to be recognized, please, first uh returning to us, but now as a certified English as a New Language teacher at Cook Elementary School. It is Rosa Santiago, Miss Santiago. And in our high school, we have uh two new guidance counselors joining us, Tatum Turwilliger. And Roxanna Colazo. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh and Ms. uh Banfante will be getting your picture shortly, if she hasn't already, so thank you and welcome aboard, we're glad you're with us. I also wanna recognize um John Boyle, uh who was just appointed as the director of district safety. Mr. Boyle uh served with us this past year as an interim for a couple different stints. He's presently on a much deserved vacation, uh he'll be with us, you know, kind of part-time on a per diem. Basis through the end of August and then begin full-time in the new role on September second, so welcome back, Mr. Boyle. Uh some other announcements tonight, um there I, there was, as many of you know, a Supreme Court ruling. Uh our map would be tailored, uh where the Supreme Court uh ruled uh in favor of the parents who brought suit against. Uh I believe it was the Montgomery County School District in Maryland. About the requirements for schools. Uh in essence, in terms of what our legal counsel has advised us in their interpretation of the ruling. Uh at the, certainly at the elementary level, to provide parents and caregivers with advance notice of any curricular materials. Uh of uh a nature that might highlight LGBTQ plus lifestyles and and forming parents of those materials. And giving them a an opt-out opportunity, if you will, and then at the secondary level. Their interpretation of the ruling was it was not as stringent, however, schools would need to. Uh provide opt-out opportunities for any parents or caregivers who raised concerns over similar materials. So right now, we are uh reviewing uh any uh potential curricular materials that we have that might. Fall into either of those categories. I will say that it does not apply to libraries, as these are kind of elective books, if you will, that students may take out. Um but we're talking more about kind of required readings of an English language arts curriculum, social studies, family, health, et cetera. Okay, uh so we are, you know, still working with a very fresh legal interpretation of that. Um and we haven't even attended conferences yet, which are coming up, there's legal updates this summer. I'm expect, I'm attending uh NISB's in Albany, I think, um Ms. Riley are attending the one in Uber. Um so I'm anxious to hear what they have to say too, but as we sit, that's what we're doing, that's our interpretation.
So just one quick question, so at the beginning of school year, a parent can get caregiver. Cannot just send a note into elementary school, often their child out.
It would have to be on a kind of a case-by-case basis relative to particular material.
So then um all this material for the parents to review is gonna be upfront and ready as of when?
So right now, at the elementary level, we're identifying any particular books that that might uh be uh in play.
But if a parent wants to review their child's curriculum, every book that's used, that's used, when is that gonna be ready to be reviewed?
Well, that's not, that curriculum per se exists in some places, but not in every classroom. Uh I would say if a parent is particularly concerned about it, that they should contact their child's teacher, uh we do open house every September. Um.
I'm sorry, but we're talking way ahead, I'm talking about before school starts, the parent wants to see what's being taught to their child. How do they find out before school starts with the curriculum?
If it's before school starts, they can contact their school's administration and they can turn that over to the teacher if it's been assigned. Uh however, know that teachers are not working during the summer, for, you know, they may be, but they may not be. Um I would say that a better, a more assured course of action would be to do that in early September. I would also suggest, you know, if you know a parent who had the same teacher for the same course the year prior, that might be an informal network of finding that information out. And then there's a, we don't know yet, but there is a kind of a process similar to what our legal counsel likened it to was the uh. Immunization opt-outs. In terms of like religious beliefs around immunizations. They likened it to that type of threshold of a- at the secondary level of opting out.
We don't have religious exemptions for.
They're, they are available, but they're very limited in scope. But again, we don't know yet, you know, I I do plan on keeping my ears open at legal updates to hear what different. Uh you know, what different school districts are doing, what different legal counsel might offer, but right now. I think we have the best of what is known based on.
I'm sorry, I thought religious exemptions were uh some way with with uh.
My understanding is there's very limited situations where that could be considered. I'd have to dig that up for you.
Yeah, please.
But it it my understand, it it's gotten a lot more stringent, it's not as light as what it used to be.
Could not the interpretation of the law be that case-by-case basis would be. That class for that year and that instead of the onus being on the parent, that just like TSA has a no-fly list. Then they would have a no-expose list and the teachers would know whether or not there would be. Information that would be exposing, unduly exposing somebody who has this religious. Disagreement and wants to opt their child out.
Well, I think right now what we are probably heading towards, and again, we're still new, this is two weeks old.
Right.
Um is raising awareness among faculty that this opportunity is out there, this this right exists. And that they should be looking at, you know, texts and materials that. A parent or a caregiver or even a student at secondary level might raise that objection to. Um in terms of the actual list, you know, we don't have that today, but. But that 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 might be where it's headed. I don't know yet, but that's, doesn't exist right now, but it it's a possibility.
Could the teachers even go and be pro? Could the teachers even go and be proactive when they get back from summer that they would not unduly?
I think the advisement will be giving our staff is, look, this is out there. Know that um a parent will have the right to opt their child out of particular. Books based on this ruling in else areas regarding LGBTQ plus. So if you are going ahead with those books, it might be in your best interest to. Provide as much advanced notice as you can to your parents and caregivers. And or be ready to have alternative assessments or activities for for students, cause. You know, it could be, you know, you might be giving that book in first week in December and. The day after you assign it, then the parent objects to it and uh and you know, does the opt-out and then you have to have something ready.
Wouldn't it be easier like what you're saying, because I'm just thinking lawsuit wise, like if I sent a note in saying. Tommy is not to be blah blah. Wouldn't it be easier to have that stuff ahead of time so that you know in advance? So our teachers aren't scrambling the day after they assign an assignment?
Like right there in school tool? Boom, I had I had military family, had a blue house. How about? Don't expose to this material.
It's it's not as simple as don't expose to this material. That's not the interpretation of the ruling. The interpretation of the ruling is for LGBTQ plus materials. That parents may opt their children out of those. But it also talks about age appropriateness too. So what might be considered in the best interest of the student at sixteen years old? Is vastly different than what might be in the best interest of a student who's six. So that's in the the advisement as well.
Only up to what the parent wants.
The if you read the advisement and you read the ruling, uh they do. Equivocate on age appropriateness. That there may be instances where, given the age of the student, given the the type of material. That it is in the best interest of the student to continue with that material. Where that line is, I can't tell you. The rule the ruling doesn't, the ruling does not have that, you know, it doesn't define it.
It spelled out that primary there means to be a little more. Notification to parents and caregivers.
Yeah, so that's that's what we argue. They'd be given an alternative.
And if they won't run class, does that mean that child could need to be wrapped in a hole like?
Uh well, we'd probably use the library. Awesome. Or or I mean, it it depends on how the instruction is set up. You know, if we're gonna have a class discussion about it, you might not wanna be here for this, you could go to the library. That could be, if it's, you know, quiet independent reading and I'm gonna be working with different groups, then there's no re- you know, there's no reason for the student to have to leave it. There's a lot to be learned yet, okay? I mean, that's just where we are as an industry. I gave you some links to some articles on uh what's happening at the state and federal level, particularly with funding. I'm just putting that on your radar now because the next twelve months will be interesting relative to federal and state budgeting around education. Um I don't know where it's going, I don't know where it's going to end, um but next year's budget, there's some real threats to it at this point, and I've given you. Links to articles to it.
I was just told this weekend that there's forty million dollars for New York State that's just hanging in the breeze. And that that was one number that was kicked around and that they're waiting for X, Y, and Z to fall down. But just know that that money is there, lying wait, but it hasn't been acted on.
What money? Federal monies?
Yeah, federal money.
Okay, um so I don't, yeah, I I don't know where it's at right now. I do know since I wrote my. Report to you that New York State is one of X number of states. Who have petitioned to have the title monies released.
Think one of fifteen.
Yeah, um know that those title monies are basically what states rely on for the new fiscal year for title that's September one. Okay, so right now we are fully funded through title through August thirty-first. But right now, all the other titles, not Title One A, the big one, but all the other titles are being withheld at the federal level. So more to come on that. Uh and our leadership retreat uh will be held on August fourth and fifth at the Elden Preserve. Uh we'll talk about this court ruling being one of them. Looking at data, uh having a presentation from Anthony or Lee Anthony Pisano. Uh Red Cardinal Consultant will be doing the second day as well as administrative goals, school climate surveys and more work on APPR.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans? Thank you very much, Matt. Uh moving on from there, we have Assistant Superintendent for Business Update, uh Mrs. Phelan.
Thank you, President Crumley. This evening you have the budget and revenue status, things auditor report and the school lunch profit and loss for May of twenty twenty-five. I'm asking the board to approve the literacy volunteers contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And um we've had that contract for many years. It's a GED program and the um school doctor. Contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Any questions for Lisa?
Um the literacy, is that a hundred dollars per student or is that twelve hundred dollars just the contract?
I think it's twelve hundred dollars. Let me just bring it up.
I know it said like ten hours or I forget.
So it's eight hundred dollars per student. Eight hundred dollars per student.
Any other questions for Mrs. Phelan? Thank you very much, Lisa. Moving on from there, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. Update, Mrs. Carla.
Thank you, President Crumley. Good evening, everyone. Um so I'm just gonna juggle a few things around to get through the less. Uh explanation pieces, so um the SS books at Cook. Uh is on my my report as well as the educational business contract. So educational. Vistas is the company that reads our three through eight ELA and math tests. As well as our August Regents exams and our January Regents exams. So and they have done this in the past. Um you'll see in their price breakdown, um what it is per test to grade. Um as I, as I mentioned, they have been the uh company that has done that grading. For several years now. Um this would be for next school years through three tests and um this August Regents exams. As well as this January, yes.
On there it says for January of twenty-six, there is two hundred and something ELA. Are we going back to giving everyone?
No, so right now, all we can do is project. Uh and we, they always ask us to use the last year's numbers as a projection. They only bill us for the actual number that they grade. But for now, we cannot open it up because we're really not sure. That was not the plan. We we did not feel that went the way we wanted it to go. Um next, uh I'll jump down to the last one, educational analytics. I know the names sound similar from uh similar, but. Education analytics is the company that um gives us a score through our APPR for teachers. Based on what their SLO is. Um so for example, in the elementary um. Grade levels, it's the fall to spring and WEA growth score um for our high school. Teachers, actually for K eight is NWA, but for our high school teachers. Um it's certain regions exam. So this company analyzes that data, that growth data, and then gives us a number that has been approved by. Our teachers' union and our APPR plan to be able to give a final number to our teachers. Um and again, we've used them for several years. The contract that you're approving is for this past school year's. Numbers, so we just closed everything out as we finish getting Regents results in. We'll be able to submit to this company all of those scores and they then do the analyzing and give us a final score back. Okay, so and that's again, the contract that we have put up every year. They've been doing that for us for a while. Um second to last thing I wanna talk about, actually with the Hebrew Day School contract, um one of the private school consultants. And then second to last thing I wanted to talk to you about is High Five Schools. They've changed their names a couple of times, but we've been uh working with them. Um this is actually the second full school year. We started working with them the year before. But we didn't do a full school year. Um so what I asked for, because I've been hearing really good things, not only from. Teachers, but also from students and principals, having them in the buildings and some of the work they've been doing. Um so I handed out to you just some of what. There what they've been hearing and what they're seeing as what's working as they work with our different. Um teachers in our different buildings. We kind of evenly spread them out this year um. Between all six buildings uh they were in. And then I've talked to the principals and we've kind of worked with them on a plan for next year. We're gonna scale back a little bit. Because we feel like some of the things that they've been doing, teachers now should be able to continue to carry on without too much more. Um assistance, so they're gonna kind of pivot and do some additional things. So if you look at the last few pages. Um they talk about the things that they're looking to do next year um within the district around. And again, this. They're they were originally known as the restorative group, if you remember um from several years ago. And the majority of their work is around classroom management, building relationships with students, conflict resolution with students. Trying to get students to communicate better with each other, um teaching teachers how to communicate better with students. So that's the majority of the work that they're doing um on site. And then the last thing I wanna talk about is the RFP that we are awarding tonight. To or asking for your approval to award tonight um for a before and after school latchkey program. So I did kind of put these, what I'm gonna read off of, I do have those attached to my report. Um but just to kind of give you, uh and again, a reminder, we've talked about this a little bit, but what the RFP process is and why it came about. Um so for the last two school years, we have used um. Through the Empire Grants, we have used Healthy Kids as the provider of our before and after school. The grants only covered after school for K through five, not before school and not pre-K. Um we were basically told until this, I think it was the third week in June, we found out that uh we are continuing to get the grant. But up until that point, we were told the grant was going to be expiring and there would no longer be any type of after-school program grant. Um because of that, we started looking at Healthy Kids being a for-profit organization. Um and were we able to have them use our facilities for the purpose of offering latchkey? So that was really what prompted the RFP and why we went out and asked um other programs to submit proposals to us. Um I did talk with three organizations about the proposal, the YMCA. Healthy Kids and the Boys and Girls Club. Um I did meet with all three organizations to kind of talk about what we were looking for in a program. Um only the YMCA and Healthy Kids opted to actually submit a proposal. Um the proposals from both are attached to your um to my report and to my notes. Um so basically what happens once those proposals come in. Um we take a look at a through a rubric and we kind of grade them um to see who gets. The higher number based on the rubric. Um the YMCA and Healthy Kids were very close uh in in number. Um and so from that, uh I met with Dr. Evans and with Lisa and we kind of dug a little deeper to see. Um some other things that we really wanted to make sure that we had covered and that rationale includes. Um Healthy Kids has a slightly higher rubric score, as I just mentioned, by two points. Um the employees currently working for Healthy Kids, most of them are. Employees of Monticello during the school day, so they're either aides, LTA's. Um we've even had some teachers working in the program. They do the before and after school program. That probably would not change, even if we changed. Um vendor, because that's where a lot of our uh Healthy Kids gets their employees and I would assume other vendors would get them. Um from within the school as well. Um Healthy Kids currently has the site license approved and in place. There would be no guarantee that uh a new license would be approved in time for September if there was a change in provider because we started so late with this RFP. And again, we started so late because we recognized. The uh grant would be going away and we may not be able to use Healthy Kids, which is why we went out for proposals. Um the RFP is only being awarded for one year. This was a one-year RFP. Sometimes we do multiple-year RFPs. So we can request proposals again next year. My suggestion would be to do that in late winter. Um and ask for those proposals so we have enough time to be able to meet, go through them. And then if we decide to go with a different vendor, that vendor would then have enough time to get an application in. And be approved before school starts again um in the twenty-sixth school year. Um and again, if the Empire Grant goes away, which, you know, we've heard this for three years now, this is the last year, this is the last year. Um then any for-profit organization would be charged a facility fee. We've talked about that already, seen a brief from Anthony's firm. Um and that facility fee would probably change their fee schedule, so it might change um. How they're able to compete for for that particular um program. So again, just some things to think about. So this is a one-year RFP. Um and we can, you know, as I mentioned, as long as everybody is in favor of that, opening this up again in late winter. Um to get proposals for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year. So that is what I have in my report. I'm told it was lengthy. Does anybody have questions?
I do. On High Five District-wide Next Steps, it says reduction in chronic acidism and targeting through targeted strategic interventions. And what is that going to be?
Um so we're again, along with what Dr. Evans has talked about with the committee, really looking at strategies. Of why kids are not coming to school. So what strategies can we attach to? If we talk with students and we say, why are you not here every day? What are the reasons? What can we do as a district to get them here? So really individualizing that. They've started having those conversations with our middle school and high school students already. Um and and they're they're buried all over the place as to why they are not coming to school. Um but really sitting down with the committee and actually starting to put some action steps in place to how we combat. Reasons why they're not, so that kind of root cause analysis and and bringing solutions into that.
Are any of these conference um contracts funded by anything that might get taken away or? Um with help.
It's currently big with help.
Yes, so High Five is currently in this year's title, so no, um and we should be fine. I have not written it into next year's title. Knowing that we may not be able to to have them again because of that reason unless we put them in the general fund. Um and the educational analytics and um the other analytics contract, those are both general funds.
I was gonna ask about if it was grant funded, so that answer that one. But then the other question is, how? How do we know if this is effective after one year? So we do this and do we just? We get uh like interviews from any of the teachers? Is that how we find out?
Yes, so to answer your question, we actually put a survey together this year that we're gonna continue next year, surveying our teachers and our principals. I also met with principals, so they're the best years out there from, you know, teachers coming to them and saying, I need this support or I had this support and it really worked. Um I know through some of our principals doing post-conference uh on their observations with teachers, recommended. That High Five come into their classroom and do some modeling exercises with those teachers because of things. Principals or even our instructional coaches might have seen in the classroom when they did their um observations and. Said to a teacher, High Five can really help you with this. They're coming on June second. Why don't? You see if you can set something up for them to come in your classroom and take a look at some of these things. So there's been a lot of communication. Um but mostly we're hearing from teachers through principals and then through that survey. We're also hearing from students that they like the activities that High Five is doing within the classroom.
Okay, and then um.
And I will say, actually, when I did bring up to principals, this might be the last year, if things don't go the way we're hoping with title. Um there was quite a bit of disappointment in that. So I said, well, we're gonna make the best we can out of this year and let's see what we are a year from now.
Thank you. So how is this implemented? You said that the money that's being used is some of it's onsite coaching. Some of it is maybe during a conference, a staff conference day, when they have different classes?
So a lot of what they do require students to be in the picture in some capacity. So a lot of what they do is onsite during the school day when kids are in the building. Um they do do some conference support, but they also um have offered teachers the opportunity to zoom with them. If they have questions, they'll check in with teachers on a strategy they might have given. Um they've also checked in with principals and have, so they they'll do some off-site work through a Zoom or a phone call. Um the directors and I work with them quite often to kind of see where they are. We check in with them every probably month and a half, just to see where things are going. So they'll zoom with us. So that's all included in in this consulting.
Okay, and that's coordination with the teachers that we have as coaches, correct?
Well, mostly this is classroom teachers. What I'm saying is if coaches have been in the classroom, they may say to a teacher, hey, I noticed. This might be a little off with engagement. That's something that High Five might be able to help you with. Maybe as a suggestion that's, you know, so giving them strategies when they come into a classroom. Um when the coaches are in classrooms, we don't get that feedback from them because it's not supposed to be evaluative. But they know they're very uh in tune to what High Five is doing, so this might be a strategy suggestion that the coaches make. But they know, they're very uh, in tune to what High Five is doing, so this might be a strategy suggestion that the coaches make to a teacher in that coaching conversation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Teresa? Thank you very much, Mrs. Carla.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, moving on from there. Um, we have our action items. I am fully aware that we want to vote on T eighteen as a separate piece. Um, I'm also going to pull. Um, T ten is a separate piece and. Melinda can choose to abstain if she would like or vote if she would like, um, but that would be up to you, your prerogative. So essentially at that point, I need a motion to take T one through T nine. T eleven through T seventeen as a group, motion made by Mrs. Russo, seconded by Ms. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Motion to approve. Action items T one through T nine. T eleven through T seventeen as a group. Motion by Mr. Broden, seconded by Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. A motion to a, to approve action item T ten. Uh, motion by Mr. Russo, seconded by Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? Any abstain? Any no? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on from there, we have action item T eighteen, third read adoption policy forty seven, ten grading systems. Um. Do we have a motion on that to approve T eighteen? Motion by Ms. Greco, seconded by Ms. LaRusso. Any discussion? Um, the only discussion I have is at the present moment, I feel that. This is definitely an upgrade from our present policy. That I would hate to see go into the new year with our present policy and not go in with a better policy that we could always. Um, look at after the first semester, make some changes. Policy is a living thing.
So if we don't approve this tonight. We could, we could just go on again.
We're getting awfully close to going into the new year with the old policy.
I don't know that going, you know, going back again, um. How much more we're deviating from the. What the initial ad hoc policy proposed, with the policy committee approved three one, coming out of policy. Um, you know, how much more we're deviating from those. So I would be. I, I, I probably would not bring it back at that, you know, between now and the end of August. You know, also given the closeness to the new year.
And, and should it approve, I would hope that there would be something before December, in December to evaluate. What's going on, you know, if we, if we think it could be tweaked here and there.
Midyear review to take an analysis of how it's doing amongst our teachers and students.
Would you be okay with after the first semester?
After this first semester, because we'd be going into the second semester, right? And we'd have to just wait all year for it to be changed?
You.
No, why are we?
You have to wait, no, in terms of the assessing, assessing.
Yeah, assessing the rear.
So assessing, you'd have to wait, you wouldn't have to wait, but changing the policy, you'd have to wait till the next year.
Why?
Well, you, you'd want to make sense that we, we gather data, you'd want to make sense of what the data is showing. Um, realistically, it'd be a year.
I'm not going resort world.
Okay. It, you also wouldn't want to change a policy the third quarter. Now, if you want to like turn this off or extend this or reduce that, you could potentially. But, you know, in terms of changing a grading policy third quarter, there's some real pitfalls there I would recommend against.
Or if we found departmental changes that maybe should be put in the policy. That could be, always be put in the policy for next year. Because the departments do have leniency in creating what their particular standards will.
Right, and if we, we find the, you know, departments or administrators or teachers or, you know. Obviously, abusing it might be a strong word, but you know, they're, they're might, they might be interpreting it differently than what the intention was, then we'd certainly.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think it falls short of academic rigor. That's what's basing my vote right now tonight.
Very well. All right, so T eighteen, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
So it's just Vicky, Todd and Helen.
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on from there, we have uh, closing a meeting, correspondence.
I did have one thing to add, I'm sorry. I did mention it in my report.
Oh, what else do I want to add?
Uh, I, uh, the district safety plan, I shared that with the board. It's posted on our website for public comment. There'll be a public hearing on August seventh. With uh, the board's potential adoption has to be adopted before September first, so this, we're looking at the second meeting in August to adopt. I believe Ms. Jersey, you had some, some suggestions on including additional administrators. And.
Male detection for visitors.
Male detection, so I'll run the, I know the male detection is in the code of conduct. I'll talk to our legal counsel whether that's advisable or that's wrong. But if you have any, usually more coming on that, but do look at it between now and August seventh.
Am I done adding stuff?
Yes, I'm done adding.
Quick question. So we're gonna review that policy after the first quarter, correct?
Um, well, what's semester?
First semester, sorry.
So two. By then you probably have enough material and data to actually look at to say.
Is it working, is it not working?
Is it working, is it not working?
Okay.
The social studies department completely whiffed on it, but the math department is fantastic. How can we align those two? What, what needs to be done?
Social studies teachers don't whiff on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, biased. And is there any questions or comments from the public?
Oh goodness. Uh, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Ms. Greco, seconded by.